I call this meeting to order. Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the public for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll call this Mayor Durham. Yes, Mayor Prothea Brown.
Here.
Councilman Bowman.
Here.
Councilman Mayor.
I'm here.
Okay, we have no public comment this evening, so we'll move on to approval of the meeting minutes. Has council had an opportunity to review the minutes?
Yep.
Any changes or revisions needed? All right, can I get a motion, please?
I make motion that we approve the minutes from the November 4th regular council meeting.
Second.
Go please. Mayor Durham.
Yes.
Councilwoman Bitchwa.
Yeah.
Councilman Bowman.
Yes.
Councilman Mayor.
Yep.
Moving on to reports, City Administrator Brink Salasur.
Good things, Mayor Bob Downs, if y'all see him, he's our auto mechanic at the shop. Ten years experience with the city, so we really appreciate him. And I need to turn this over to Carol, if it's okay, for about a minute. She said a minute, so I want to time.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council, I just asked if I could speak during Brink's, but just to provide an update that the still and ice removal from sidewalks, it's that time of year, we're getting ready. We've posted that under public notices on our homepage, and then I'm doing an email distribution of that list, and that will go out later than tomorrow.
Awesome. Thank you. Hopefully it will snow.
That was less than a minute, that's something. Shucks.
Finance Director Monique Edwards.
Good evening, Mayor Durham and council members. I wanted to give you an update on the loans for the enterprise fund for infrastructure. Today was the day that the applications had to be turned into the board. I spent a good part of this morning on the phone with Monica from DOLA, fine tuning our application. She feels really good about it. She says our credit score is great. She was very appreciative of the interactions that we've had and how responsive I was to her requests. And so she's feeling really good about it. The next step will be, she will send me a final draft, and I will forward that. You see those drafts, and then I will receive an email as to when our applications will go before the board. I will receive Zoom meeting information, and we can log in and attend the board meeting. She doesn't think that there'll be any additional questions because she's really happy with our applications. She said, but there might be, and then I'll just create those answers for the board. So I'm really happy with the interaction, and I'm really happy with the fact that she feels so good about.
Thank you so much for your words.
Yes.
She knocked it out of part. I would suggest, depending on the day, if somebody from the council could go and get Adam, did all the engineering for it, in case there's an engineering question, he would come to the meeting. I think we need to have two or three representatives, whether they ask us a question or not.
Okay. Yeah.
I always think you should cover those meetings. If you have a question you can't answer it, then you might not get approved, so. Thank you.
Before we move on to presentations, Dan Cummings, the superintendent of the CCD School District, asked me to invite council and the city administrator to our Thanksgiving lunch tomorrow from cell one of the high school, so if you can make it, you will. In mind. All right. Moving on to presentations, Colorado Mission of Mercy Program, Dr. Stephanie Hoffman.
Good evening, Mayor Durham, City Council, Cripple Creekers, and fellow Teller Countyans. I'm not sure how you say that, but thank you so much for your time tonight. You have a really busy agenda, and I know you have a lot to do, and to give us this time is, I'm very grateful. Thank you. The Colorado Mission of Mercy is coming, so there's no question, we are going to take over your high school in September of 2026. We are a portable, large-scale dental clinic. We have been doing this since about 2007. I've been practicing in Teller County for about 20 years. And I've served as your trustee to the Colorado Dental Association. I've served as a delegate to the Colorado Dental Association and the American Dental Association. And during that time, I have been trying to champion Teller County to receive this amazing gift. They finally listened, so they're coming. We had about, I think maybe eight site visits now, and I would be so remiss if I didn't thank Rick Bowman and Daniel Cummings for opening up their doors and pretty much saying, yeah, of course, you know, so they are heroes, if you ask me. The Colorado Mission of Mercy is a two-day event for patients. Again, it's held annually. We bring in about 200 dentists, about that many hygienists and assistants, and overall about 1,000 volunteers. We bring in two huge semi-truckloads full of equipment. It is a well-oiled machine. It's just absolutely fantastic. We see about 1,300 patients every year and deliver about $1 million worth of care. So to be able to come into Cripple Creek just warms my heart. There's so much need in central Colorado. So the fact that we're able to come here, we're going to be able to deliver. I know that all the volunteers are thrilled. We were in Loveland in October. I've got my co-site chair sitting back here behind me. We spent four days up in Loveland observing and learning how to kind of facilitate this as site chairs. And it's just incredible, and the folks that do this every year, these thousand volunteers, I heard the chatter, and they are so excited about Cripple Creek. So there's some kind of energy here that is just fantastic, so it's gonna be great. So anyway, that's what we are. We're hoping to be able to do some really good things here. We'll be calling on, of course, the local folks who who don't have access to care. This is really intended for people who either can't afford it financially, or they just don't have the access. It's absolutely free to patients, so the only thing they have to bring is time. There are long lines. Sometimes we encourage them to bring a book, but that's the only thing they have to pay is their own time. So it's gonna be fantastic. So one thing that I'm calling on for the community, and I've talked with Woodland Park already about this too. I don't know if I said that, I'm a dentist in Woodland Park. Okay, so I talked to our folks there in Woodland Park. One thing that I'm asking is for all of Teller County, for those who are able to really come in and be a part of this with us, we're gonna have to feed those thousand volunteers. You know, I'm gonna need volunteers, we're gonna need some generators and a backup generator. You know, some big equipment, we're gonna need some forklifts, so that's gonna be my ask of the community. So I know we can do it. We're Teller Strong. We saw that in that food drive just last week, so I know we can do it. So I'll be plugging y'all as the year goes by. So in the meantime, I have a little slideshow, it kind of shows, it kind of speaks for itself, but a little Okay. That's how big it is. And then I just go, oh. Oh. On the side. You said that. No, it's okay.
It's a test.
No fear. There we go. Okay, so this is just kind of what I was saying. We did start this in 2007. I was actually a provider at that 2007 clinic. It was amazing, but in about 19 years, I mean, it is so fine-tuned, it's amazing. So it's amazing that we have this many volunteers, doctors and hygienists and assistants, who are doing this completely out of the goodness of their heart. And they love these patients, so they're not getting paid anything. Usually it's 125-chair clinic. You can see how they line them up there. We're a little bit smaller here in Cripple Creek. We're gonna have to downsize just a little bit. I think they were saying about 120 chairs. That's why I say that efficiency is gonna be really important, and I know we can do it, so. We have state-of-the-art equipment coming in. I mean, we have the panoramic, just talking to somebody about a panoramic. That's a panoramic instrument.
I get that one.
I know. I'll get to you on that. You know, obviously, digital radiography, we do some cancer screenings, dental hygienists, everybody's working real hard, we're doing a lot of fillings. Oral surgery, we're taking out teeth. Except for wisdom teeth, we try to avoid that in this clinic. There are some things we are limited to. We do some root canals, mostly front teeth, not as many back teeth. Crown town. They, again, bringing in state-of-the-art milling. We have labs coming in, working with this too. Mostly front teeth. We're trying to improve people's smiles, so they can go and get a job, you know, and feel good about themselves. So again, that's state-of-the-art equipment coming in here. I mean, if that isn't improving a smile, right? I mean, it's just, it's awesome. So they're gonna feel a lot better going in and getting a job or going in for an interview, looking like that. We do a lot of pediatrics. A lot of our residents in pediatric residencies, they're already dentists, so just going on into pediatrics. The schools bring their residents along, so we've got some amazing people. Really, really talented doctors coming in here. Again, I was saying, you give them a fish, but you gotta teach them how, right? So we spend a lot of time educating patients. That's a big, big part of the function and our mission with this, so. There's always a t-shirt design too. I've got a great one for Cripple Creek. So, and that's kind of it in a nutshell. And then I do have a little video before I go on to questions, and I think you can just hit play on that. And if not, that's okay, I can talk. That's okay. I can just keep talking. Yeah, anyway, Rick knows I can talk. So, does anybody have questions about this? What we might need from the community or?
Is it a first-come, first-served?
Absolutely, first-come, first-served. No questions asked. I mean, we will go through a health screening. So if someone's compromised and we're concerned about their overall health, that might be something that we go over, but there's always a health screening first. Everyone's gonna walk out with a set of x-rays and a panoramic, so right there, and an exam right there, that's over $250, any person that walks through the doors. So all of that is a benefit, so. But yes, first-come, first-served, and we're seeing anybody. We don't ask those questions. Got it? Yay.
Things is crossed.
There we go. Okay.
We're here at the Colorado Mission of Mercy. It's free dental care, no questions asked, first-come, first-served, for people that have often been putting off their care in order to take care of their children. With the economic situation that we're dealing with, just putting food on the table, clothing on their kids, transportation to the job, or several jobs, there's no money left for dentistry. So they just suffer. Well, this is an opportunity to remove the suffering that these people have been with for years. That's what the Colorado Mission of Mercy is all about.
We don't make enough money to buy health insurance for our family, though we make too much money to get help with the state. My husband and I both work, and we both, you know, pay bills and food and rent, so no money left to do anything else.
I guess self-esteem is the biggest problem for me and work, but I think it'll help both, a great deal.
You know, when you ain't got the front teeth, because they're all broken and whatnot, people tend to, whether they mean to or not, you know, kind of shy away or what have you, to think that you're, I don't know, maybe dirty or just poor, you know, and nothing wrong with being neither one, just it was our turn to get fixed, so I'm absolutely thankful that this place is here today. He's one of the, he's the best doctor I've ever had work on my mouth, ever. I have to honestly say that. It was in and done and finished like that.
Raised my daughter all by myself, working two jobs, and she graduated CSU three years ago and works in Denver now. Sometimes it feels like all you do is work and you never, you never get any benefit from it, just to pay your bills because there's nothing left over. And I wasn't always in this position, but things happen, and I gave one of the dentists this morning when he told me they would go ahead and fix my teeth. I gave him a hug and started crying, you know, it's just like, the fact that you guys would just do this. Thank you so much. I'm overwhelmed and overjoyed.
The problem is that these people have hair that needs to be met, but they don't have a dentist to go to, either because of lack of income or a lack of knowledge about why they should go to the dentist. And that's part of what we do today. We're not only taking care of the problems, but we're trying to educate them as to how they can try and prevent those problems from coming back again.
What is overwhelming for me is that we have all of these dentists and dental students and all these professionals that say, you know what, we're gonna try to make a difference and help as many people as we can help today.
We work for hugs, and we get a lot of hugs. There's a hug quotient that we have here, and it's very high. There's a lot of people that really appreciate and understand what we're doing for them.
Yeah. It's just amazing, and I still get teared up watching that, so, and I've gotten a lot of those hugs, and it's absolutely an amazing, amazing thing that we can bring to our people, and finally, our friends and neighbors are gonna get this care. So I'm thrilled. We're gonna get, I'm also on the board now, one of the directors for COMOM. So hopefully, we'll have a little more push for our people here. They do only come into a community once every five years. But I sure would like to get on that rotation. I might insist on it. We'll see how it goes up here, but I know that Teller County can show the rest of Colorado how it's done. We are an amazing community, and our neighbors and our friends are worth it, so. That's all I have for you. We are coming. I just hope I can help make this one of the best experiences for the entire community.
This is so phenomenal. Thank you.
Yeah.
Sorry, wow, sorry, just a couple of questions for you. As far as local volunteers, do you have any idea how many you would need?
I can give you some brochures, and you can go right to the website and start signing up, so I'm sure we could put a lot of folks to use. We're gonna need a lot of Spanish speakers. So we need interpreters, but I happen to bring some brochures with me, if there's someone I can leave them with, as for volunteers.
I'll have a look.
Yeah.
And you had referenced the need for like equipment forklifts. Do we have, how are we coordinating that as far as those measures are?
So that's kind of why I reached out to some of the folks in Woodland Park. There's a lot of construction folks out there that might be able to donate some forklifts for us. Like I said, we come in in two really big semis, and we've got to get all the equipment off the semis and into the school. We'll take up probably most of the square footage of the school. So we just need to be able to move equipment around, and that's why we need the forklifts, the generators, the air compressors, all of that. Sometimes we can, you can talk to our friends at the mine here. I'm sure they've got some heavy equipment where they could help us out, and you know, I'm not too shy to ask. So if they can't do it, we'll keep asking. We do have a budget where we can rent if we need to. But it's always better for any of these donations to go directly to the care of the patients. So again, we are, we operate, we're a 501(c)(3). We operate on all donations and just donations and volunteerism, so that's kind of how we do this. There are some bigger outfits out there that give a little bit more. And again, we'll be asking for that, for help. If you go to the website, there's a place where you can make donations and where you can sign up to volunteer, but also for patient information. So again, I've already reached out to the Aspen Mine Center, is that right? I've reached out to them, I've already delivered postcards to them as well, or the little cards. I have more flyers and information coming. So I was saying, I'm kind of ahead of the game, actually, but I think we need to be. So I want to get this information out. We're gonna, we're gonna get information up to Buena Vista and Salida also. We will reach that far, we'll probably reach to Canyon City. When we were in Loveland, we had people coming from Kansas and Wyoming. Some people come every year, and they just keep looking for where the next event is gonna be. So my hope is we often will do a triage on a Thursday night, so that we have patients ready to go, six o'clock in the morning on Friday. That way, I'm hoping we can kind of have some more of the locals come in for that triage and kind of get them in line right away, so.
So it starts at 6:00 a.m.?
Starts 6:00 a.m.
And how long does it go till?
Well, so technically, it goes, I think, until 6:00 to 6:00. But you know, in triage, when we're bringing more patients to the operative doctors, and they're about ready to pack up because they're very tired, and we beg them to see eight more patients, they almost always do. So that night can sometimes end at 8:00 o'clock. I think we ended it at 8:00. Uh, one of the nights. So it's a little bit flexible. We put it in writing that we end at a certain time, but you know, we don't like turning people away. And there is a point, even up in Loveland, where we had to cut the line off. So, because there's a point where we just can't do more.
Stay in here, in the area, the doctors and?
Yeah, so that's nice. I talked to some folks at Chamonix. I'm gonna ask for maybe just a courtesy discount. Everyone takes care of their own hotels and expenses that come and volunteer here. But if we could help out, you know, there's gonna be some people camping at the KOA up here. Maybe they'll be staying in Woodland Park. It'd be great if they're all right here. I think they, some people are already making reservations, so it's pretty awesome. And if a community was looking for a dentist, this might be a nice way to advertise too, by bringing.
We have a dental office.
Just saying.
So if you could just please keep us posted on the city side of any deficits, of anything you need as far as equipment or volunteers, and just kind of keep us in the loop, because I know
Absolutely.
There's even private citizens who have equipment that I'd be happy to assist with it. And like on the high school side, because I worked with Rick Bowman, he was telling me this about this a few months ago before I got your email, and I'm like, that doesn't sound real, and actually, yes. You know, we have a culinary program, and we have our seniors-only volunteer hours for graduation, so there's a lot of different avenues, so yeah, just please keep us posted, and we're happy to.
And I have an ulterior agenda to this too, when you mentioned the kids. I am really hoping, that's why I have these people behind me. I'm really hoping to pull in some of our youth, really demonstrate what community is about. We can go through government shutdowns, and we can go through these things, but I'll tell you what, if community comes together, I mean, we can withstand anything, and I'm really hoping that we can really show these young people what it is to be a community. So I've talked to the high school in Woodland Park, actually, his son's school, he's in NHS there in Colorado Early Colleges. We've already put a plug there saying volunteer hours. And the kids can, you have to be 16.
I was gonna ask him something.
16 years old. We need them to guide patients as, as taking them from one section of the clinic to another. So we want a patient to always have a guide, so they don't get lost in the fray or translation, so to speak. So a lot of the kids will do that piece of it. The culinary schools would be great. I'm hoping to have a baked potato bar, because you know, we're kind of going with the minor theme, so a little donkey and minor. So if we can theme it up a little bit and really celebrate Cripple Creek, I'd like to do that too, so let people know who we are up here, and how kind of we're the cool kids up here, so. Yeah, any other questions?
How many events do you guys do a year?
One event a year.
One event a year. I mean, I'm sure that's enough, but it's
A lot.
Yeah, it's awesome.
Yeah, and this may evolve, I don't know. Sitting on the board, you know, we've talked about some other, other ways of doing this, but right now, this is the one big one. So once a year.
Thanks, Ray.
Thank you so much.
Sure. And I saw you do denture work bridges and plates and everything. If someone goes in and has that done, and there's an issue, is, can you be referred to, a follow-up?
There are referrals, so the denture piece of it is a little bit tricky, so if, for example, a patient comes in, they have one tooth, and they have that one tooth extracted, if there are any extractions, we're done. We can't do any more work. So most of these patients that come in for dentures are either completely edentalists, so no teeth left, and they'd have to be there on that Friday, just because of the time it takes to fabricate the denture. So we have to be kind of careful about that. The crown and bridge, it's mostly just single crowns, and again, mostly front teeth. If you've heard of a flipper to replace some front teeth, we only do it for the front teeth. So we're improving smiles, but we don't necessarily have the ability to do like metal-framed partials and that kind of stuff, so. And of course, implants, we would not be able to do because that takes four months. So follow-up, we do have resources for people with special clinics, those kind of things, and we always, in that exit interview, it's a huge piece of this. That's where the education takes place, and the exit interview is also where we give those resources to our patients. Can I answer your question?
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you for your time.
All right, moving on, presentations. Saul Malek is here for legislative updates.
Hello, everyone. It's you. Saul Malek, Legislative Liaison for the City of Cripple Creek. That is a really hard act. That's, that's really amazing, huh? Wow. You gotta throw like more humor in here or something, I don't know. This is gonna be tough. So this is mid-interim, and just sort of my report going into the last part of the interim. The legislative session starts January 14th this year, which is actually late, which means we're gonna go into the middle of May. I don't like that, but whatever, it is what it is. So yeah, we're 56 days away, the first day of session. It's very active right now. I'll just say that, both politically, legislatively, regulatorily. We have a governor who is going into his lame duck session, so I'm not sure what we're gonna see from him. I think it's gonna be no interest. And I don't know what's gonna happen there or what his priorities are yet, but we'll find out pretty quick. Right now, his focus is mainly on housing, kids, and budget, so you know, if he funnels that energy in that direction, I think we can all get on board, but knowing him, you know, we never knew what was really gonna happen. So it's also Speaker of the House Julie McCluskey's last year. I bring that up because she just passed the bill that allowed the gaming revenue or sports betting revenue to exceed that $20 million when it comes to being used for water. So there was a bill, or the law was, and this is very basic. You can only spend up to $20 million of sports betting revenue on the state water plan. Well, her bill just said, no, you can spend it. Well, her bill just said, no, you can spend as much as you want. So that is a legacy bill for her, I think. Um, without her, it definitely changes our dynamic when it comes to sports betting because all of the focus will be on the water plan. Um, and maybe we can figure out different systems for that revenue that's coming in because it is still a ton of money. Like a ton of, it's, it's staggering. I, I can't remember the last number, but it's, it's very. On top of all of that, we have seventeen legislators who just had ethics complaints launched against them. Um, it is the, it's called the Opportunity Caucus, which are the moderate Democrats in both chambers. This is just gonna drive that wedge deeper between the very left progressives and the moderates who are trying to bring a little bit of balance back to the legislature. So um, we'll see on that. They voted yesterday unanimously to investigate it through the independent ethics. So this is real. This is, you know, this is not frivolous at this point. So we'll see what happens there. Um, last thing, just generally, the state budget is still a mess. We were gonna be in worse shape than we were last year probably, which is like hard to imagine, seriously. It it's crazy. Uh, like I, I, I'm still not quite sure how we got here or how we're gonna get ourselves out. But um, it's, we all have some ideas about how we got here, but nobody has a real idea about how we did. So um, we can't raise any money through fees because that bums us up against the Tabor cap. And the last thing the legislature wants to do is trigger a Tabor refund. So we can't raise money, can't spend money, and there's no money coming in from them. Yeah, we're, we're not in the best place.
Saul, it's pretty easy, you know? You can spend more money than you have, you know?
That's exactly what we did.
I mean, we have to provide a balanced budget. We have to send our budget to Dota so the state can monitor us. Problem is, nobody monitors them. They spend more money than I have. That's the whole problem.
It it is the problem. I I.
It's not just this state either, and it's not.
It's definitely not just all around.
It's too, so sorry, get on my soapbox.
We've, we've over appropriated. Uh, for certain programs are admirable and and have a lot of merit, but are not sustained. So that's.
Funded mandate, a funded mandate.
I mean, it's, this administration has been. Um, on top of that, we the, this, we're over appropriated not just in money, but in water. Um, I'm curious how that's going to sort of, I don't intend to trickle down to move places like Cripple Creek. Um, and how your dynamics with water works too. So I'm watching out for that. I don't think there will be a direct impact, but who knows? Uh, we're going through a bunch of compact reforms and it's gonna get really interesting. So um, and that's mostly on the west, with all that water going into the back of California and Arizona. So on the legislative and ballot proposal side, um, as you probably all have heard, um, the Canyon City Police Department did go in and shut down the care of them, what it was called. But it was basically a game of skills bar, um, and they kind of watched their legal sheets. So it's still happening. We know it's still happening. At least we're starting to get ahead of it and law enforcement is doing something about it. But it's still rampant. It it's everywhere across. I I put my little breakdown. I don't know what we can do to make the law clearer or better. I just don't. It is so clear and so explicit that if you do this, uh, maybe we can up the limits on crimes, um, as the whole limits. But the way the state's politics are right now, people don't like to up crimes or civil liability limits. We'll just say. Um, so we're, we're gonna keep working on it. I don't think there's much we can do, but who knows? We'll, we'll see. Um, I'm gonna skip to the last couple of ones. It will end with internet gaming. Um, the childcare tax credit in kind property contribution, I just wanna see it happen. Um, it would be really nice to have that working out every year for you. We, we will, but it it's, I've talked to the president of the Senate about it recently and he basically was like, I would love to. It'd be great, but we can't get around it right. So uh, we'll keep watching for that. Um, and then the the distillery bill um that basically said you could set up an on-premise, basically you you could be a manufacturer, but sell everything that a bar sells. They wanted to keep it under that manufacturing license and not go through local licensing. As a non-starter, C N L beat out, I think C C I was a, I don't know about C C I. But um, that is gonna come back. We don't know in what form. It was actually Stephanie and I um who were able to kill that bill, um, pretty much alone with Cripple Creek and and a group of the league. But that is coming back. What we're hoping is they put it in a place and statute that says you have to have to license it. Where you go through the state, you have the license there, and then you go through the local community and go through their process. Then you can sell it all, no care, but go through the same processes that a bar tab and H R licenses. So keep you updated on that. Um, we did have a conversation. It sounds like we're getting closer to something that will work. Um, but we'll, we'll see. Last one.
Yes, yes, thank you.
Yeah, that, that, it's just alcohol's so hard and weird to work in. Um, so we'll, we'll just.
Like everybody's drunk.
And and better than marijuana. Uh, the least people state so. Uh, la- last one is the big one, and this is internet. Um, we know that there is language error. We know who is running this. We know what they're gonna, what they're gonna say and what they want. Uh, that's pretty simple. They just want to open it up for all platforms to have internet getting listening. That is unconstitutional to begin with, and they're gonna have to find a way to do it. That's probably not through the legislature. Um, the legislature to refer a measure to the ballot, um, which this would have to do, requires a two-thirds. Um, I think there's enough evidence when it comes to gambling addiction, when it comes to broken families, when it comes to everything that comes along with gambling is all very well known. There have to be certain checks um that we have to put in place. And right now with sports betting, there are not, not, not a one. Um, you can spend all the money you want until you have no money left. There's no matter. On top of that, I just found out that a group that I used to represent, Problem Gamblers Coalition of Colorado, is now being funded by DraftKings and who's the other one?
And.
Yeah. So now if you go on their website, it says sponsored by David Miller. So now the people who are being affected by these groups are being run. So this is like, I, I mean, boxing in house, like that is, that is the difference.
It's like Budweiser sponsoring. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
It's the same thing. Yeah, exactly. Or Jack Daniels. So yeah, I mean, so we are, we're looking at this not just in the guise of protecting constitutional provisions for the cities and counties, but for the well-being of culture. This is not, in my opinion, working for those people, not a healthy step for, for these communities. So we'll see. Um, I, I will say there is a very big positive to all of this. And it's the fact that we hosted our first meeting for Zoom with Gilton Tellers Central Blackout. That is now for, at least that I remember with. Um, so that, that in my mind is a historic um vote for us. And we are coordinating, um, we're trying to figure out what next, what next steps are we gathering until? Just trying to figure it out. But it's gonna be uh uh hopefully a coordinated effort between all five communities. Um, but just in general, we've gone from pretty bitter relationships with other communities. And now that we're directly working with them and coordinating this. That was the goal when I came on, I think, you know, that was intense. Um, maybe less, but pretty close around there. That was the goal, was to get us on even footing with all the other. And that's been a goal. Now we're moving forward. So. So that's the legislation side of everything. Any questions? Okay, great. Last one, um, well, almost last one, but um political appointments and elections. Um, we are uh appointing two new Republicans, one for Rose Puplessi, who was minority leader in the House. That's a huge loss. She was being tested. I'm really sad about that one. Um, and Representative Ryan Armigas, um, who had an interesting exit. I can tell you all stories later if you're here. Um, it was the highlight of special session when we had it back in, was that August? So came out a special session. By the way, special session didn't do any, it it literally didn't. It was frustrating. Um, and then just general information, session starts January fourteenth. Democrats have a forty-three to twenty-two majority in the House. Uh, they have a Democrat, they have a majority of twenty-three to twelve in the Senate. Um, and then the midterm elections will be held on November third. That's right.
Saul, thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it all.
Thank you for everything.
Uh, I'm gonna talk up the C M O people.
You didn't go very good.
I didn't. They need a logins. Thank you, everybody. Appreciate it. We should add Tuesday's song. Thanks.
Moving on to epilepsy awareness month proclamation, I'm gonna turn it over to Councilman Schwab. Uh, this was his suggestion. I fully support it. So Councilman Schwab.
Thank you. Can't imagine everybody knows this, but I have some epilepsy close to my heart. Um, not me specifically, but this is a big, big thing in my house to say that. So I just, I'm thankful for Mr. Annie to let us do this. Here we go. I'm a terrible reader, by the way. So whereas epilepsy is a brain disorder that causes reoccurring unprovoked seizures, and whereas seizures are sudden surges of abnormal, abnormal and excessive electrical activity in the brain, which can affect how you're, you act or appear. And whereas epilepsy is the fourth most common neurological disorder in the world. And whereas one in twenty-six people will be diagnosed with epilepsy at some point in their lives. And whereas people with epilepsy have a three times higher risk of mortality due to sudden unexpected death in epilepsy. What's that word? Epilepticus?
Yep.
Epilepticus? I don't know that one. The suicide and drowning, which I have stories on. Uh, whereas having epilepsy can affect your safety, relationship driving, and so much more. And whereas despite challenges. Whereas.
Whereas despite challenges, people with epilepsy can live happy, healthy and productive lives with proper medical care and treatment. And whereas during epilepsy awareness month, citizens are encouraged to learn more about this neurological disorder and support organizations that promote epilepsy research, prevention, treatment and a cure. Now, therefore I, Mayor Annie Durham, do hereby recognize November twenty twenty-five as epilepsy awareness month in the city of Cripple Creek, and I call this observance to the attention of all of our citizens.
Thanks, Katie.
Okay, moving on to new business, agenda item A. Consider approval of Parks and Recreation ADA improvements. Becky Frank, Director of Parks and Recreation.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Thank you so much for the amazing skate park. It's um been really, really cool getting to see the kids use it um kind of activity there. And it's only been officially open for about a week, so. Um, wanna thank you with that. We are effectively wrapping this project up. We are slightly under budget and I do have one correction to the memo that um I put together for you all. Uh, we did receive an additional invoice that I overlooked for the um testing of the concrete, which all went back good. Um, so actually about nine thousand dollars under budget in this project. Um, that being said, we do have a little bit of concrete repair that needs to occur on the sidewalk outside of the park. Um, that we do have two sections of the concrete that were damaged as a result of taking equipment in there. Um, fully responsible, responsibility of the contractor. He is willing to repair that section at no cost. Um, but doing so, it kind of uh repairs a section of concrete in a larger section of concrete that is in disrepair. Um, so he did provide a quote to be able to do that entire block. I did um provide some visuals in the packet of that work and what it looks like. So it would be that entire half block from the greenhouse down to um where the parking lot at the Wildwood is, not Wildwood. Thank you, Century. Um, there are some cracks in that sidewalk plus just typical age wear. Um, when we were looking at doing this, we really noticed um a section that goes down into the greenhouse and the basketball court there. Um, provided some additional visual, visual pictures of that for you to look at too. Apparently it is um constructed of some paving stones that are falling apart. Um, so asked the contractor if he'd put together, you know, what would it take to go ahead and make that space ADA accessible there as well? Um, so he did provide a quote for that. Um, we could accept any parts of this proposal that he put together or none of it.
So what's left now?
About nine thousand dollars, you know? And the the altogether quote from the contractor ended up being to do all of the work would be twelve thousand. So it would be an overage of about three thousand dollars.
Steve, Steve has added public works. He has some concrete leftover.
Or this is because it's not a tawny, we don't take it out of parking rack?
Sidewalks are actually thieves.
Everything he say.
Well, considering the fantastically new and approved skate park, I think it would make a whole lot of sense to not address this issue as well. And just looking at the picture, because I know it's not up on the, on the screen, but these um, these improvised stairs, paving stones. Um, yeah. Yeah.
Let's do that. I would, uh, where is it? Let me make this move.
Yeah.
Well, it's not ADA either, so pouring the concrete, so it's more of a ramp. So maybe it's, we'll be ADA, get rid of stairs, steps.
I would make much of that. We appreciate a little twelve thousand dollars for Parks and Recreation ADA improvements.
Yeah, I'll second.
Well, please.
Councilman Trinari?
Yes.
Councilman Morden?
Yes.
Councilman Schwab?
Yes.
Mayor Derrick?
Yes. Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you.
Thanks, Becky.
Moving on, uh, agenda item B, consider approval of resolution twenty twenty-five dash twenty-four. A resolution approving and adopting the personnel handbook. Carol Stotts, Director of H R and Risk Management.
Well, council is aware, um, and as we make adjustments to our handbook, um, we do put that at the beginning of our handbook. Um, city attorney Elizabeth and the H R team have been working together for quite some time to do another full update to the personnel handbook. Um, so I'd definitely like to thank Elizabeth for her time. Um, Sharla was an immense help, um, did incredible helping formatting and just cleaning it up, making it a shorter document where we can, um, I really don't feel like there was anything controversial um changes in this revision or overall update. I did review that with Frank in detail. Um, so I'm just requesting to repeal a resolution twenty twenty-two zero three and consider approval of resolution twenty twenty-five twenty-four, approving personnel handbook.
I have no objections.
Aaron, did you read it?
I did.
You're all good with it?
I am.
You are, I am.
Me too.
Me too.
I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve the resolution twenty twenty-five dash twenty-four.
I'll say it.
Vote please.
Councilman Trinari?
Yes.
Councilman Morgan?
Yes.
Councilman Schwab?
Yep.
Mayor Derrick, yes, and thank you guys for your work on this.
Yeah.
Agenda item C. Excuse me. Consider approval of Le Anthony Picor to be added to the Main Street Board. Marie Reeder, Director of Marketing.
Hello, Marie Reeder. I'm the Director of Marketing Events, Amanda Benson, our Main Street Coordinator. She's also here. Uh, we're here to ask you to consider the approval of Le Anthony Picor as our seventh uh board member uh for the Main Street program. Uh, we've really gathered quite a good crew. Uh, we had a really good board member, our board meeting last night. We officially have officers, so they will start leading the meeting now. And uh, our application is ninety-eight percent. And our application is ninety-eight percent complete. And the deadline is December first, but we'll have it in before then, and we'll find out in January. If we receive the official designation, but we're working with Gail and all of the powers that be and. Everyone assures that we are on track and if not beyond. Where we should be, but just really proud of Amanda and her work. I mean, I'm just so happy that we hired her. She is just incredible. With Small Business Saturday and everything, but with Lee Anthony, he is the Marketing Director of Golden Nugget. And so he is our second board member to represent the casinos, and he is here. Do you have any questions? Lee Anthony? And, because we really want them to have a voice in what happens in downtown, and we have merchants and we have someone from the county. And so just asking you to, to vote him in.
Personally love the fact that he's from Golden Nugget too, which is not necessarily. On Big Town.
Yes. But it is in our Main Street district.
No, absolutely, and I want them to know.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes, because they are highly involved and, and you know, they're concerned and want to have a say so in what goes down. Yes, thanks.
I would.
Mr. Picor, did you want to say anything?
Sure.
If you could come up to the microphone.
The Mayor, House members, I do appreciate your time, much time, but just give a quick, brief background on why. So I've been in this casino industry for almost twenty years. I worked in rural markets. I'm from Wisconsin, so I'm very. Aware of how rural markets work and how we got to bring out of market people and bring excitement to our small areas. I've also worked in big markets at Phoenix, Minneapolis, you know, so I'm very rounded in tourism. Public relations, you know, events, special events. I've been on C V B boards, Chamber of Commerce, Director of. Board of Directors. And I've done every gamut, I think, of the marketing discipline from. Working at the little booth all the way to being a marketing director for about. Roughly about seven years now at different properties. Lastly, I just, you know, background. I want to be able to bring some. Fresh ideas, new ideas, different things that I've seen work, and like I said, in some of the local areas, I. Believe it or not, we've, I've worked at. Four different properties in Wisconsin. And not one of them are on a man drag, you know, and so we, we continue, you gotta do your due diligence. The way you're marketing your, your city, your, your events. And you make sure, with digital nowadays, you know, it's so. Eat, it's a lot easier, a lot more effective, a lot more cost effective, and it's a bigger reach, so. Yeah, exactly, and so. You always want to bring those out of market people, right? That's where they come, they stay at our hotels, they, you know, come to our. Dine in and everything, you know, so use, use, use our. Everything here in our city, so with that said, I really appreciate your time. Appreciate your nice efforts. Thank you.
Well, thank you for your willingness to, to volunteer for the board. That's awesome.
I'd like to add just one more thing, just how much we appreciate the casinos. The relationship. And Frank can attest to this, has really improved. And the rapport, every banter back and forth all the time, we recognize that we both need each other and how much we appreciate. Them being willing to step up, because they get a bad rap, a lot of people complain the casinos do nothing, and. You know, this is just such a strong way for them to be involved in improving our community. They, it is, it's really good.
I need to help with Mike. Can you help me with that?
No one can help with Mike. Plus Mike, yeah.
Well, I. I trust yours and Amanda's judgment, and it sounds like you have a wealth of knowledge to, when to do the effort, so that being said, can I get a motion?
I'll make the motion. We approve the appointment of. Lee, sorry, Lee Anthony Picor to the Main Street.
I'll second.
Vote please. Councilman Sherry.
Yes.
Councilman Mullen.
Yes.
Councilman Schwab. Mayor. Yes, thank you. All right, agenda item D, consider approval of wayfinding signage and plan to guide the design, placement, or phasing of signage improvements throughout Triple Creek. Becky Frank, Director of Parks and Recreation.
So thank you again. I'm gonna tag team this with Marie, if it's okay with you. Frank's shaking his head no, but. So this has been something that's been on the city's plate for a little while. And. Yeah, so I, I'm wondering if we can't pull up my presentation a little bit. So I did put together a little bit of presentation with some background. And I'm gonna fly through it. There's a ton of information here, but I don't want to take up too much of your time tonight, so I'll email this out as well, because I did embed a couple of hyperlinks. But really, you know, we've got some funding in the budget for twenty twenty-five, and the amount of ten thousand dollars. It can go a little ways, but it doesn't go all the way that we feel like it needs to go. So there's been some discussions that we've had interdepartmentally between the planning department. Jaylen and Camille have also participated in these conversations. Our Main Street partners. So. Wayfinding has come up, the way that it's in your budget for this year is interpretive signage, and there's ten thousand that has been earmarked. We are really close to the end of the year. Amanda is just now getting her feet under her. And are kind of looking at for some strategic direction for, from you all on how to proceed with this. So. I saw this in a mention, or this, the wayfinding mentioned in one of our current, or former plans, this was done in twenty twenty-three. And there's a link in this that actually takes you to the plan, so if you need to review it, I'll get there. But within that plan. There were some actions that were identified, the development of the pocket park process. Creating a needs assessment for further parks and recreation development, so we are actively pursuing. Grant funding to fund Park Strike Control's master plan. The development of the Mountain View Adventure Park, which has been accomplished. The sidewalk access, so we have begun that and will be launching or going into construction with our. Cities, or the city park sidewalk phase of that in the spring. And then again, this, the produce wayfinding signage for existing assets. So I know that wayfinding is a little bit of a wonky concept that not everybody is super familiar with. And how does that differ from interpretive signage that we're familiar with, at being in a historic community? So really, that wayfinding signage provides clear, concise directional and locational information that helps residents and visitors navigate. To the community effectively. Little bit of primary purposes of wayfinding. That I'm not going to read the entire slide. And then some typical components, different types of wayfinding signage that happen, and I'm gonna skip this one because I have examples of each of these. So this is your directional signage. This is. I think really communicates the need for why a plan would be necessary, because it's not just. What does the sign say? It's also how tall does it need to be? Where can it be placed? Where is it effective? How big should the? Want be on it, et cetera. And a really attractive example from Lyons that Marie took. From our partner or our neighbors, some examples from Victor, this is maps or kiosks. This was a really cool one in that. The map, as you can see, needs to be replaced, but it's easily replaceable within that structure. And then the backside of that sign actually has a location for. Community events to be displayed, so changed out periodically. Gateway signs, a couple of examples, the golden sign, of course, is super iconic. And the one in Victor from the one end, those really help you identify that you are in that place, you've entered that place. And.
Oh, yeah. So thanks.
So the arch is known as a gateway, and it's also a part of the Main Street program. And up until two weeks ago, we thought that an arch just in one location was years down the road. Thanks to some good meetings and good communication, we, we can't disclose who yet, we're gonna wait for the proposals, but we have. Possible funding from other sources for a welcome sign on Teller One, and then also one by Golden Nugget. So we've been meeting with Frank, he loves these meetings, he just welcomes us with open arms every time all five of us show up. Yes, yes, we understand.
Tell them to get out, they don't leave.
No, we don't. We, we come in snapping, and yeah, we, but we understand that you're tired of plans and. Tired of seeing things on paper, and if people want to pay for our goal, our arches, we want to speed up that process while they have their hand out, we want. We wanted to help with that, so that may even be, they designed the arch. And we come to you for approval to see if you like it or not. So that's also, because even the design is about twenty thousand. And then we have to go through engineering, because we, we do want sustainability, we want this to last for two or three hundred years or however long. And to be large, if the, the road grows and, you know, so just lots of. Questions for Frank, like what comes first? What do we do first? And, you know, superstar Becky here, she's done the song and dance, and. She is guiding these projects as well. She is amazing. And so, just so you know, this, this. Which way, both archways have been sped up, and we will have more information very soon.
Awesome.
In the meantime, having that consistency of design between the archways and any other signage that, that goes into downtown. And our community spaces. Really does help to demonstrate that sense of place, reduce that sign pollution. And make sure that things feel well thought out. And then, yeah, that consistency through downtown, a couple of examples, and that this was a super basic project that happened in Victor, we didn't have a ton of space. Speaking about Victor from my former life. Did not have a ton of space to be able to dedicate to signage, and so looking at some creative ways. To also help reduce funding, these signs were actually produced by Department of Corrections. So that saved a ton of money and gave some folks some real life skills that they could take. Out to the world. And then also, like, really helped to identify, and I apologize for the awful pictures, I stole them from Google Earth. Google Maps as I was browsing through. But it did help really tie in those community spaces, including the community center there and the fire department, so created that uniformity. So. You know, doing something like this requires at least some level of planning for it to be able to occur. And. What, you know, so it's where do we dedicate the funding? To do that, and it could possibly be a university technical assistance program project, which would considerably reduce the cost. For some of that design work. And then I just wanted to make sure that you guys had a couple of examples of some wayfinding plans. I'll send this out, these are hyperlinked too, so you can see. The density of them.
Straight up.
And then alternatively, wanted to talk quickly about historic interpretive signage and how that differs. This is one of my favorite pictures, I think I saw this, I borrowed it from the internet, but I, I think I saw it actually in Pittsburgh. At one point in time, and it made me chuckle. So a couple of examples of interpretive signs from the area, and then the conversations that we've been having. We'd like to maintain that inform, uniformity of look within the gold camp. With historical interpretive signs, there's a ton of history here in Triple Creek. But the purpose of them ends up being a little bit different, as you'll see from the wayfinding sign, it's really that. Sharing community history and what you show people once they are at a place versus directing them to a place. They are typical, but there's also like a ton of opportunities there to incorporate. QR codes linking to multimedia or expanded content that takes time to create and produce. And make sure that they're linked appropriately. And it's, it does take some time to do it thoughtfully. And then just some additional considerations. It does require that collaboration with historians, historical societies, and community stakeholders to create those. And then I just put together a little bit of a, you know, comparison slide of what each of those are. Next steps. We're just hoping to get your feedback on where to utilize funding for this year and or next year. So that we can proceed within the remainder of this year and into next year. Future.
Just a comment. If you don't approve next year's budget till December third. If you don't spend this ten in twenty-five, you can direct staff to. Put that ten into next year's budget, and so we can make that change.
So we're not panicking.
Yeah, you know, and have to spend it, what I'm saying is, yeah, you don't have to spend it this year. We'll just put twenty in next year's budget. We blew this money.
Maybe we can come up with a plan of what we're doing.
So you don't have to spend it by December third, first. We can, on the third, if you're wanting to do that, I'm seeing heads shake. Monague will make that change and.
What, what's your feeling on that, Becky? So we're not like in a panic to get it spent? Anything you could spend on this year?
Yeah.
I mean, I'd like to do.
Definitely, you know, talking to Amanda, it does put her into like a pretty significant time crunch of developing the content for those signs, and then. You know, fabrication of them, I doubt we'd be having invoices by the end of the year. And they feel really rushed and not as intentional as we'd like them to be.
Yeah.
Yes. Yes.
Well, let's just, then roll it over and take notice. I'm not, I am, I love you guys are on the gas. I'm not saying hit the brakes and, and slow down on this. I am just saying, let's not just throw the money because it's there and we have to spend it. We don't have it.
Exactly.
So it buys us some time and we can spend it better.
Slowest, smoothest, fastest.
Another thing council can do next year, you can, we can always, which we haven't done here in Triple Creek, we can all. We've always done in our past is do amended budgets. So you can, if they come up with a great idea and you, they need more than twenty thousand. To start next year, and they come to, you can amend the twenty-six budget, we just have to put an ordinance. On your agenda and go through adoption and amend the budget, so we've never done that since I've been here, but I've done it. Every place I've been, at least twice a year, we amended budgets, you know, because sometimes your. Your revenues come in higher than your expenditures, or maybe they're not, and you have to. Adjust the other direction and cut some expenses, but so. We've done both, we've talked about doing that, so that's always an option on anything that we have in next year's budget, if you. If something comes up like this and you say, oh, let's do it, you know, we can amend, so.
So does the motion need to include?
Oh, I have a question first. We are keeping the minor and donkey out there, okay.
And they will, they, yeah.
Those were a lot of money when we came.
And the, the plan is that all signs will complement those.
Okay.
They're talking about an arch out there.
Yeah.
And an arch up here too, so the location, we'd have to look at right away, and widths and heights. For both locations, because you got to have them high enough for truck traffic and wide enough so wide loads.
Yeah.
Can get through, so you have to plan it, and I'd like electricity to both of them. That way Christmas, we can light them. Most cities.
Thinking, Frank.
Well, again.
Like every night too.
History of, you know, this gray hair's got me through some, I've seen some stuff, but. Yeah.
Yeah, I remember when. So. When the plan was brought before them, and Rick, you remember that it was. What Sandra was pro-tem, Libby was, it was somewhere in there, but. You know, they've been a part of our community, the minor and the donkey is our heritage, I just.
Something on the, if they could put, something you could, where you could put flags. Have a mount, so you could put flags on the archways for July fourth, or Veterans Rally, or whatever. I mean, anything like that, that you could use it for. Announcing your, maybe for banners to hang. And so all kinds of different things. Needs to be thought through, anyway.
We want them to vote.
Yes. And so, how does this?
So does the motion need to include moving the ten thousand from this year into next?
I think that's fine. I don't think that's required, because I think that's gonna happen as a matter of December third budget.
Are you needing a motion? What do you, I don't think.
Yeah, this is just some guidance.
So. Forward with what their plan is and then we'll come back and then the money will be. They have a great idea, even though they do bug me.
You guys are amazing.
It's great to see all the departments working together that some are really related, but they're all, they're all getting together and throwing out these ideas to each other and it's it's fantastic to see staff all working together.
Moving on to agenda item E, consider approval of one thousand dollar donation to the Homestead House for Pearl De Beer Days, Frank Salvato, City Minister.
And you're married, council, we've had this request. Cody is on the board for the Homestead House, so we've kind of had this request come at us to support the Pearl De Beer Days homes that we support other organizations. I think a thousand dollars to the Homestead House, they can also, you know, go through applying for us for like we've helped fix the building before, you know, I think this last year we put money toward fixing the posts in the front. But this is actually to be used for the event, so staff recommends it. We would need to add it to the agenda, I mean, to the budget for the third, the thousand dollars.
Yeah, I think that's great.
It came to.
It's only one becoming bigger and bigger and better.
It came to staff, but we can't give city funds to an organization or a nonprofit without council approval. So it really needs to be in the budget, I couldn't just write a check for that. I think it needs to be approved by council and then the budget process.
Well, anyway, every year it seems to get bigger and it's such a fun event, I have no objection to.
It's a, it's a strong municipal event and that's really the criteria under law, the law is, is it a municipal, does it support?
I'll make a motion that we approve the thousand dollar donation to the Homestead House for Pearl De Beer Days.
I will second. Yes.
Yes.
Mayor John.
Yes.
You want to leave it now?
Agenda item F, discuss utility rate increase, Frank Salvato and Monet Edwards.
I put on, on in front of your spots proposed rate increase of an average of seven point five percent. There were some errors in the memo that Raph Telus sent, so Melissa and I went through that. And we can see the increases, it talks about the difference in what the new amount is for residential and the three levels of commercial water and sewer.
It's this, this. So just for the community to know, this was discussed during the budget workshop that we had and council wanted different agendas, so we have time to present it to the community and talk about it before the rates would go into effect. This is part of the twenty twenty-six budget to raise rates, to start making repairs to the water sewer system, the, the lines in the ground and some stuff at the water and wastewater plant, so the rates will go for those purposes. We're also, the councils where they give us approval to apply for a loan grant or I guess it's called loan forgiveness with the state through the state revolving fund. So Monet's been working on that and that's also part of the rates. The state revolving fund wants to make sure that you're raising rates to keep the utility sustainable. So they look at that, so we had to provide a lot of information, one of the first questions are y'all raising rates next year? Because that's one thing they look at, so this is all based on hiring a consultant that does this for cities all over the United States, so Roth Telus we did hire them, they started last year or no, earlier this year, what, March, April, I think, somewhere in there. And working with Jonathan and Steve and staff. Melissa, who's helped us, been here a long time in utility billing, she was instrumental in helping get all of this, in the information put in properly. So she met with Roth Telus even after they made the presentation to y'all, she went back through and found things that need correcting.
Those, those corrections are in.
So.
Document. We were also very concerned about how we're going to send this information out into the community. And I spoke with Melissa in the past. They've done a couple different things, on the utility bills, there is a small box where information can be added for any particular bill. She did say that at certain times when they did increase rates, I think when they went to tiers, they did include in the envelopes that they sent out, a one-page sheet explaining things. And so we can work something up. I told her that maybe we want to do both things, have the additional sheet and also a blurb on the bill just to, to kind of cover all bases. So it's, it's up to council how you want us to proceed and what information you want us to.
I think it needs to be said too, that when we see the rate studies from Raph Telus, that we are tremendously lower on our rates than anybody in almost the state, I mean, we are very, very low on our rates compared to almost everybody.
That is true.
Along those same lines, being the guy that remembers when water bill was twenty-five bucks a month no matter what. Even where we're sitting now, it's significantly higher than that, obviously, and then also knowing the difference between the average household income in Tella County versus the average household income in Cripple Creek. It pains me to have to do this, in all honesty.
At the point when the bills were twenty-five dollars, the general fund was supporting, helped supporting the enterprise fund and in order for us to be eligible for the engineering grants and SRF loans and loan forgiveness. We had to cut off the general fund, the most it can supplement the enterprise fund is ten percent. So while some changes aren't economically great for our residents, it did open a lot of opportunities for grants to improve our infrastructure and loans and provide them with more quality services and.
Just the basic infrastructure that needs to happen, that was upgraded, so that's where I said it with that was, I know this has to happen because we have to do these things. And the increase is not going to be substantial, it's not going to be, I mean, it's not going to be twenty, thirty, forty dollars, it's, it's not, it's going to be a few dollars a month.
Well, when we first started doing this, however many years ago with Paul, people were made aware back then that, you know, it was going to be, we did what, a five-year plan? I think it was at the time, that it would be in this year this, the next year this, this, so I don't think people are going to be like, oh, my bill's going to spend, you know, process since we started so we could get the true enterprise fund. So it's not a huge shock. I am with Cody, you know, and ouch.
Well, like for water on the base rate, it's eighty-six cents. And then depending on usage for the tiers, it went up ten cents up to thirty-two cents. So for water and then sewer went up sixty-two cents for the base rate and if they go over two thousand gallons, it goes up ten cents. So I think council purposely chose the four percent increase to minimize the effects on the residential.
So we haven't mentioned that, they, Roth Telus study, which in the past, the staff did, you know, Paul and they did their own study in-house and worked on trying to get the rates up, they never really did a study with the consulting firm that compared us with other cities directly. So what they came up with was an overall average of seven and a half percent increase. And the council took that and so residential is four percent, small customer is.
Well, that's right, the commercials.
Yeah, small commercial is seven and a half percent. Medium commercial is ten and then the large commercials are twelve percent. So it's really putting the, and they use the most money and use the most sewer, it's not the people in the residences that use the most of the water. Jonathan can speak to that, or the wastewater. Just want to touch on one thing, one of the, during the study, we are, Rebecca. Because we're an enterprise, so an enterprise now, that we went to the state and got a million dollars to do engineering on our water and sewer systems. And part of that study was to find out where we have inflow and infiltration. That's water that gets into the sewer system from stormwater or runoff snow melt and you're treating it at the wastewater plant, it's getting into your pipes and it's getting into your manholes that haven't been fixed or they're broken or somewhere in the other, the water's getting in. So we located that section, it's the east section of town. That's where that water is coming, so that's the first priority with this grant, the loan grant, is to hit the east side of town and get those lines and manholes repaired so that we're not treating groundwater at the wastewater treatment plant, which is a cost also, so. So talking about the SRF, they do have loan forgiveness money, so we've applied for five million. We know that two and a half of that will be forgiven, so it's actually two and a half million dollar loan. The other two and a half is forgiven. There's a possibility we could get a fifty-five percent loan forgiveness or more. We won't know that number until they give us the final go-ahead and we're ready to sign paperwork and then they'll tell you how much of it is forgiven. So, yeah, it's kind of that, and it's got, go back, going back to the million dollars we received, six hundred thousand of that was from the SRF and it's an eighty-twenty, so they only give you eighty percent loan. No, it's, they'll give you eighty percent grant, twenty percent loan unless you get a loan through the SRF, which is what we're doing. Then a hundred percent of that is forgiven. So it's kind of weird, Dola's the same thing, we got four hundred thousand from Dola, but it's an eighty-twenty, but if we get the SRF grant, that's a hundred percent forgiven. So the million dollars that we got instead of eighty-twenty will be a hundred percent forgiven. And then the loan, loan forgiveness, we won't know if it's more than fifty-fifty until we're ready to sign the paperwork, but I'm thinking and Monet's thinking, it could be substantially more, so.
In the credit application, it does list us as disadvantaged community, which will increase the percentage over fifty percent.
Well, and I just want to say, a rate increase is something that we have not taken lightly at all, whether it is this conversation, it is necessary, but that's also having the different percentages, because my biggest concern initially with the conversation was the impact on the residents, you know, it's but with that four percent increase for the residents, it's a lot more manageable than had we just gone seven and a half percent across the board and like you said, having the, the biggest water users with the biggest percentage increase really makes sense, so.
I looked back over other years and why some years it, it was sort of seven point seven five across the board or other years where some you know, different categories had different percentages and I, I felt that, that these percentages are fair and, and, and justified and and I too think that it's important for, for tackling this.
Want to further discussion?
I, I don't know that we need, this was just discussed. We just wanted to be out in the public, so we did this so the public would know that we're considering and then it is in the budget, so if they do have comments about this, you will hold a public hearing on the budget on December the third. People can come up and speak about the budget, which includes the ratings.
Will the residents have notification of the rate increase prior to the December third meeting?
I mean, they'll go, it'll go out in the December bills, you know, that Melissa does towards the end of the month, they read the meters at the end of the month and the bills go out at the beginning of the month, so. You know, I, I don't, a lot of them, we would receive them, but it's possible that we could do a public notice in the paper. It's tomorrow's, Thursday.
We do have emails of all the businesses. So all of the businesses Jeff has. You have all of those, right? Emails, so we could definitely let the businesses know and then I was trying to think how to let the residents. It's on page also. Rick, can you get that in the newspaper?
I would have noticed that, because I know our agenda is being posted at the post office, but could we put up something that kind of sticks out and grabs people's attention, so they're looking for it?
And then Sherry can put it downstairs in her, her shadow box too.
I just want to make sure the community has that opportunity on December third as much as possible.
We can certainly help, there's the standard, standard form now is for notice of rate increases. Not anything the town has, city has to do, but we'll, on direction, council will work on putting that together. And it can be posted and it can be on the city's website. But I agree, I don't think that you want to send it necessarily to, out to businesses, because you'll send it some and, and not everybody.
That's true.
Right, agenda item G, consider rejecting bids for community appearing childcare building, Frank Salvato, City Minister.
Uh, yes, mayor, you know, we opened bids on the childcare center and staff is recommending at this time that the council reject all the bids.
Oh, please. Councilment, you're married?
Yes.
Councilman Bowman?
Yes.
Mayor John, yes. Oh, Mary, did you, sorry, we're gonna bring Mary up to, if you could come up to the microphone, she's got some flowers. Is that okay, please?
Anyway, this is Mary Beal's, just a quick presentation to Frank, I heard previous speakers talk about how he's endeared himself to them and their presence in his office. We have been a pretty steady presence in his office and so we just wanted to say thank you to him.
You're not endeared.
Remember that. Anyway, some flowers for you because you really helped us bloom at this part of the project and you can share them with Raymond.
Wife, we have a long way to go, we're gonna get there.
Well, I know.
I'm gonna set them in front of my face. I'm gonna set them in front of my face so you don't have to.
Think of the endearment thing.
You pray. At least she didn't give you roses with thorns.
Thanks, Mayor. I tell you, y'all didn't do that.
Do you like, what's your favorite flower?
No, I forget it.
We had the lions. Then Item H, first reading to consider approval of ordinance twenty twenty-five dash ten and ordinance amending the sales tax rate on retail marijuana and retail marijuana products from twelve percent to nine percent for self-toasted visitor.
Yes, Mayor, thank you, uh. The reason this has come up is because Colorado Springs passed, uh, the sale of marijuana in Colorado Springs. Manitou, of course, has or has had retail sales for years. Their budget is getting decimated by this. So we have taken a hit up here. I've talked to the owners of the shop, uh, here in Purple Creek and they definitely saw a hit on their revenue. So at the time, uh, when the council passed this a couple of years ago, we can go up to eighteen percent tax on marijuana. The way the ordinance that was presented by the community to the council that was passed by the community said anywhere between zero and eighteen percent, the council at the time said at twelve. And the council also set a dollar transaction fee. So for every transaction that goes through, there's a dollar and then there's twelve percent. So they were, they came in and we sit down and talked about, uh, is there anything the city could do? And I said, well, I mean, I wouldn't mind going, talking to the council about reducing it some and we just kind of watch. I mean, I'm not going to recommend we go to five percent, which is where Colorado Springs is because I think a lot of the purchases here are from people that come up either gaming or for events. There are people in the area that do buy up here, but I don't think that's all of it. So, uh, it is a hit. I'll, I'm gonna go back and give you a little history. The city from nineteen ninety-two to two thousand and two never raised, uh, device fees. So in twenty twenty-two, they raised device fees, uh, ten percent and then put a cost of living. Correct me if I say so, I think you're, I think that's right. Cost of living adjustment basically on the devices, so goes up a little bit every year. I think this year it's three eighty-four or some, you know, somewhere right there, three eighty-four device. So this sends it out alarms to the casinos because they thought, okay, the council's not gonna start going up on devices. So we need to get them another revenue stream, so. Some of the casino owner, general managers started this process. The city council did not start this process neither did the, the staff. This came from them, they started the process to allow marijuana sales in town as another revenue stream to the city and it went out legally. They produced an ordinance and they got it passed, so what I told the owners is that was the reason this was passed in Purple Creek for the city to give this tax to keep device fees from going up too much. So cutting this in half or more is, goes back to where we were basically. The marijuana is not increasing our sales tax. Since there's only one business in town, we can't talk about the sales tax. That's against state law. We cannot talk about a individual business and the sales tax, so I can't talk about, neither can Monet. We can look at those numbers and they know we know those numbers, but we can't talk about the numbers. It's just wrapped up into our sales tax number because that way people can't figure out what the competition is, if that makes sense. So state law, we can't do it. So I did talk to them and I said, I would recommend council look at this time at nine percent, going from twelve to nine. And then we would continue to watch it. They could watch their, uh, revenue and their sales and, you know, we could adjust in the future if it needs to be adjusted, so. Uh, that's what I have before you now. This ordinance, uh, reduces the, it leaves in the dollar transaction fee, doesn't change that, but it does drop the sales tax on marijuana from twelve to nine, if the council so chooses. A lot of information, sorry, but I think the public needs to hear the background on why it is what it is.
Well, I definitely don't want them to be in a position where they go out of business. But, you know, I mean, it's definitely a valuable revenue stream for the city and I think that we should definitely keep an eye on it. I find the nine percent agreeable and down the road we need to address it. If then, cause I agree, we don't want to go all the way down to five percent, just like that, if it's not necessary. I was also thinking, what if we met halfway between the twelve and the five percent and did eight point five? That was kind of the halfway mark.
I don't know how much the point five percent was really gonna make a difference there.
Well, and, uh, and just to speak to, to Frank's point, city council is also not privy to that information either as far as the sales tax. The only two people in the city are voting in Frank's, so even council, we don't know what, what that looks like, um.
I guess my thought there was look, I, I don't think we should ever go to five, to be honest with you. I think the majority of. Yeah, talk a lot about that, but a lot of the sales are not for people that live in the area. It's for people that are coming up here for events or gaming or whatever. So I don't think you have to be at five percent like Manitou does to compete with Colorado Springs. I think that's a different market and we're a different market than them. So I don't know that you're ever gonna have to go to five percent, so that's why I always thought we'd first drop it to nine. We could go to eight and a half or eight, whatever the council's comfortable with. I was just trying to be a little sensitive to what their request was, but also looking at our revenue stream because it's, it's gonna be a hit on city sales tax, but.
And when we did go through the whole process, when we repealed the moratorium and then started doing the exploratory, I can't remember who was on staff that did the fabulous research of, uh, communities like ours in the state of Colorado, um, based on size, based on location and how we came upon that decision was based on what other communities were charging and what their tax rate was. And the reason we did the, you know, up to eighteen percent was so that future councils would not have to, you know, they would have the authority without going to a vote, that we could, we could fluctuate that tax ourselves. So, and I think, I think nine percent right now is the starting point and you guys watch and, you know, keep in touch with it down there and.
Well, we just want to keep it at the ninth of the mellow with the understanding that, you know, they're going to keep us advised. Because again, I, I don't want, I don't want the business to not be operating anymore.
We told them that, I mean, they know that. This was approved by the community, so we want them to be a viable, uh, business, absolutely, definitely.
And, you know, possibly maybe you guys, Frank, you look at quarterly and that would give you a good.
We're gonna be watching it and if I need to call them in and we'll talk, I'm sure she'll be back in my office. But we've had, we had a real good discussion, let me just leave it at that. It was a good meeting, she sent me a card after that and apologized.
Another one?
They came in, you know, they came in with guns loaded and I caught me by surprise and anyway, it was all good. It all worked out and, you know, it's what we do.
So nine percent?
So this is first reading, we'll have to bring it back to you. Uh, I think the plan is to put it on December third. I asked, we went ahead and put it inside, kind of jumped the gun. I went ahead and had it in the paper today, so you can, I didn't ask. Yeah, because it's first reading and so we put it in the paper, which is required. The problem with our newspaper is it only comes out on Wednesday and we have to notice the paper a week before it comes out. And their deadline is noon on the Wednesday before, so it really puts this type of thing in limbo for too long as far as I'm concerned, so. Anyway, sorry.
All right, um, I will make the motion to be approved on first reading ordinance twenty twenty-five dash ten.
That's on second, I'll second.
Go please. Councilmentary?
Yes.
Councilman Bowman?
Yes.
Councilman Staub?
Sure.
Mayor Dern?
Yes.
There will be a public hearing on second reading.
Right, Agenda Item I, consider canceling the December seventeenth council meeting. Thanks, Alto.
What? You're gonna be here? It, that's a council decision. We always put this on to see if you want to have the second meeting in December. Right now, staff doesn't believe there's anything for that agenda. They can't wait till the first meeting in January. You can tell me you want to cancel it. If something major comes up, we'll call the meeting. I mean, if something happens between the third and the seventeenth, we would, I'll contact you and we would. So I don't know that you have the phone, but anyway.
Uncancel it.
Uncancel it.
Yeah, I'm gonna go ahead and, I'm uncancing now, but if something comes out, then I'll keep my calendar open just in case.
I don't think anything will, just talking to staff, the last staff meeting, I don't think anything is, has to be on the seventeen. They can't wait till January seventh, but if an emergency happens, we'll, I'll let you know.
Great, I will make a motion that we cancel the December seventeenth council meeting.
Can I second one?
Go please.
Yes.
Councilman Bowman?
Yes.
Councilman Staub?
No.
Mayor Dern?
Yes.
He wanted to make the motion.
Agenda Item J, consider approval of resolution twenty twenty-five dash twenty-five, resolution of the city of Pipple Creek authorizing a contribution to support food security within the city, Frank Salvato.
Yes, Mayor, I don't know that we need this now. Everybody stepped up in this county, I mean, the city, the, the food banks, everybody, they, I think the last thing I saw was a hundred and fifty thousand dollars that they've collected, that's been split between, is that right? Somewhere in that area?
I think that's about where they're at, uh.
Hey Ted, do you want me coming up to the microphone? I wouldn't mind getting kind of your face since you're directly involved with all of it.
Ted Borden, Community of Caring.
I mean, I just think, uh, we could still do it. I mean, we still make the donation. What I was gonna ask the council to do is approve up to ten thousand and we would dole it out at two thousand increments based on how long this went, but I think right now the county is saying the last meeting is December the first, next Monday and it's gonna be kind of a wrap-up because I think everybody, the food pantries are full and we still have food coming in, so go ahead.
Yo, uh, we're looking really good to new carings, pantry, I was down at community partnership today. Uh, they're looking good. Uh, the concerns that we have are, uh, not necessarily related to the SNAP, uh, issue. It's really just in relation to what we're seeing with the economy and, uh, and with things that were really set in motion. Uh, our third quarter, uh, distribution for pantry, uh, at the Aspen Mine Center, uh, we have pretty much doubled from the first quarter. So that trajectory is, is disturbing, but, um, so the support is, is greatly appreciated. The county's done an amazing job, all the cities have done an amazing job. I guess my, my, uh, point to council would be, uh, that there may be, uh, times coming up into twenty twenty-six that, that support, because now we're gonna see probably a pretty good decrease in the support. And so I would just ask council at, in a, at a future time, uh, you know, there may be, uh, need for that. But right now, through the holiday season, we should be able to issue the Aspen Mine Center's banter. And Frank's right, the, the Food Alliance has really, uh, developed for all five food pantries in Teller County. And so those funds will be splitting evenly between all of the pantries and it's just, it's been a godsend, so. So thank you very much. I would feel comfortable with whatever your decision is in regards to that.
Is there a way we can, is there a way we can do this donation to be as needed instead of, instead of, uh, you know what I mean, uh, if we have times next year where we're going to need it, then maybe we make a two thousand dollar donation then and you're gonna have more times after that. We can make another two thousand dollar donation at that time.
That'd be amazing.
So, but you're recommending it go to the Food Alliance, so it's split? Or would you be okay with the council for Aspen Mine?
Uh, it can be done either way. I, I really, uh, because of the amount of food, like the Little Chapel Food Pantry disperses every other week. I mean, they, they are up fifty percent, I think, and they distributed three hundred and fifty, uh, food boxes this past uh, distribution for Thanksgiving, it's probably going to be in excess of that. So I always support, uh, equitability in terms of food pantries. Uh, we have a relatively small pantry, so I think the Food Alliance is a great idea, uh, so I would support that, but. You know, it's, it's, it's up to.
I'm, I'm telling you, Ted stepped up to the food pantry in Woodland Park. I think it was Woodland was running out or had bare shelves. He even loaded up food from here and took it down there for them, so they all work together.
We work very well.
We have a room out at the med center that's not being used, so staff, we've got it cleaned out and excess that came in, we could store it out there, it's a heated facility. So the county was going to buy, I think, five, uh, freezers because I think some people donated beef. And so they were split that up and we were looking at putting a freezer out there at the.
It's actually out there.
Exactly.
What up today, thanks.
Jeff, we compare, so there's a freezer out there that we've storing, but they're gonna have keys, if they need it, they'll be able to go out there and get the food they need.
I completely agree with Jared and they, I don't want to take this money away from you just because government's back open, so I, I completely support.
Well, and my understanding is, and, and I read something today, I don't know if this is going to happen or not, but are people gonna have to reapply for their SNAP benefits? I read an article.
No, um, unless that's changed, but they don't need to reapply. It's just the new applications that were delayed in, in being proc, while they were being processed, but they were never approved. And so that, uh, as far as I know, that hasn't changed, they don't need to reapply. Uh, but yeah, due to the delay, it's, it's backed a lot of people up, no doubt about that, but we're all we speaking for our pantry.
Ted, thanks for being able to clarify.
Yeah, thanks for all your things.
Small question, so as far as the food, so there, there, there was an account that was created for the donations for the Food Alliance. Is that account going to remain active going forward or is that going to, are they gonna?
No, I don't, we've decided whether that's going, I, I know that the funds are going to be dispersed, uh, with all the, the money that's in that account now, uh, evenly between the five pantries. I don't think we're going to close out the account. The account right now is being managed by community partnership, um, and we have, I don't think they've made that decision yet. So we'll probably be talking about that, just coming Monday, there's a, uh, a next meeting for the county and then on the first will be the last, so, uh, I don't think that's been featured yet, uh, and we'll.
Okay, awesome.
Thanks so much.
Thank you for, thank you, Ted.
Well, if they close the account, I mean, well, so my thought is if we, I know, we're, we're obviously Purple Creek City Council, not Teller County Council, but I love the fact that community caring shares, right? Like, like, we may be running low, it's like, let's get you money, let's get you food, get you whatever you need. And so I think if we donate to directly to community caring.
As the need arises, we'll go where it needs to be. If the money needs to go somewhere else, y'all could do that, so, yeah, I'm feeling the council's. I just think you make that motion to approve resolution in twenty twenty-five, authorizing contribution of food support security to community, to community of caring.
Up to?
Up to ten thousand.
Well, I will go ahead and make that motion. I'll second that.
Go please. Councilmentary?
Yes.
Councilman Bowman?
Yes.
Councilman Staub?
Absolutely.
Mayor Dern?
Yes.
That is the end of our agenda. Thank you all for sticking it out here, speaking is adjourned.
Over the last, it was way too long.
Yeah, we did.
And you should be proud of me, Andy.